2021 to order. And if I could ask Mr. Jackson, could you read the announcements, please?
Yes, ma'am. The me- this meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk via Zoom in the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting. And a devise is being used, device is being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else present who would like to record the meeting?
I would.
Okay, Mr. Gant. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. So our one item today is the town warrant for 2021. To discuss those items that we have not yet covered. And before I turn it over to Kevin, I will say we've gone through a number of these. We'll cover the remaining today. And then we have two options for us to think about as we go through and discuss them. At the end, we could vote on those that we know for sure we'd like to keep in, in which case Kevin can and his team can start working on the writing of those. Or we can defer until Thursday and do one complete vote on what's in and what's out. So as we go through each of those, if we can keep that in mind and we can come back to that issue at the conclusion. With that, Kevin, if I could turn it over to you, please. I see we've got a couple of people with us today. Thank you to them for coming on to help describe these, these articles.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Select Board. Thank you, Department Heads, for joining us today. We've done some really good pro- had some really good progress regarding the warrant articles. We've obviously, as the Chair mentioned, had discussions prior on a number of them. I've had recently a good conversation with KP Law about each of these, get a little bit more understanding of each. And I've also had the chance to speak in more depth with the department heads relative to each of the items as well. Right now, from a timeline standpoint on the warrant, as Trevor Mune has mentioned, the sooner we can get to a place at least of understanding on the ones that we know for certain that we're going to move forward or comfortable with, we can, we'll, we'll start moving full steam ahead on those. And if there's ones which today we're not ready to move, or even Thursday for that matter, that's okay. We'll keep moving on everything else and we'll save enough time to finish anything else if there's a need to. So with that being said, I've got right now the list of thirteen, sorry, fourteen, which was on board docs at our last work session. For you folks to work off of, I've got a version here with some of my own notes for conversation purposes that I have as well that I'll share. And the department heads for the relevant articles will certainly have the opportunity to share some details on each as well. So just off the top, General Code, the first one on the list, that is a codification of these existing bylaws. And I say that specifically bylaws because the zoning bylaws are not part of this phase of the project. This project was actually conceived in, first contract went to General Code in 2013. So there's been a lot of work over the years on this, but it hasn't act- it hasn't actually gotten over the finish line. And so one of our goals this year is to do so. What this will look like and when it's all said and done is it'll be a portal where all of our bylaws are listed in, and you'll access that portal through our website. It'll go head and hand with the revamping of our website, which we're working on right now as well. And ultimately, it'll be a single place where people could search for different, certain words, all the, all the bylaws will be there, et cetera. And so we did want to, I've done, I've been a part of one of these codifications before, and it was a real success. And so we're hopeful this will allow us to do the same. But the most important thing is to get it right. And had the opportunity to get into the weeds again with General Code and Beth to find out exactly where we are at this point in time. And also talked with KP Law as well. And we are in a position where we feel comfortable that the draft that's available, the red line, which Beth Willis sent to everybody about an hour ago, is, is a good version to work off of at this point. Confident in what's in there. And also, you should have received in your email, the Select Board should have received the email, a login information so that you can actually go into General Code's backend and use and explore what the final product will look like for a user, from the user's perspective.
So Kevin, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, that eighty-nine page document that you sent us with all the changes to the code, is that attached to the warrant?
So what we've, KP Law and General Code, I asked General Code first. I said, what do you typically do when you do a codification like this at a town level where there's a warrant associated with getting this change? And they said typically you'll just reference that a copy's in the clerk's office and you'll put it up on the website for people to review. In addition, I then talked to KP and I asked him the same question. And unprompted, they said the exact same thing. Typically, you would, you wouldn't put the whole document in the warrant itself. You'd have that as a separately held for people to review if they're interested in the, the changes that are part of the warrant article.
Okay, great. So we've gone through this a couple of times. Are there any remaining questions for Kevin about this? Any question about whether this is included on the warrant?
My, my take is that I would include it as an appendix in the warrant, not the red line, but the final version of it. Which essentially, we can tell everybody that they, if they want to look at the red line or whatever, but that all the bylaws are in fact shown that way. I think that's the right sort of thing to do. Some people like to have hard copy in their hands. It's easy enough, it's just paper that we have to produce. That would be my take. As far as when we implement it, though, there will be a link on our website that will go to Ecode, so to speak, in the cloud entry of our data. Is that correct?
Correct. So it'll be housed at a third-party server.
Right.
Kevin, are you mailing out the warrant or emailing it?
So our warrant, every year, we submit a hard copy to every resident in the town of Topsfield, and then we have online of our, an electronic version as well.
That seems very expensive to me to print eighty-nine pages for every household, or even if it's double-sided, forty-five additional pages to every warrant, the additional postage and the mailing. I'm not sure that that many people would be interested in a hard copy. They could always come down to get it, to Dick's point, if someone is interested in one. That just seems like a lot.
We could also mail, mail a version out to anybody who might have a particular interest. So contact us if you don't want to come in the building. Or if you don't have internet access, we could, per request, send you a version of it. It would certainly cut down a lot of the postage.
I think that would make sense. And that would be actually part of the warrant that as to how to go about getting it. And by a certain date, if you, if you get it to us by this date, we'll get it mailed out, whatever else. I think that that would be appropriate with the option at the last minute of picking it up at town hall if somebody wanted to. Excellent.
All right, perfect.
Well, I, and I, I agree with some of the, of what each of you have said. I think trying to include that eighty-nine pages with every warrant handout as people come into the town meeting is over the top. I, I, my opinion is that ninety-eight percent of the people at town meeting aren't going to care less about what that document says. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a huge waste of time and paper and money. I think we need to make it very, very clear about how they can get copies of that in a multitude of ways if they want to. I don't think, I don't think we want to be accused of not making it available, but I don't think we need to have it as a handout at town meeting.
And both should be available online. The red, the red line copy should be available online. I think the only printed copy, though, would be the, the one that is the final that they're actually, that we're actually voting on at town meeting.
Thank you.
One of the other things I just mentioned too is, so I mentioned, Beth sent out to you folks the red line, the eighty-nine page document, as well as the, the link that you should have had received. If you have a chance to, to review this, it would be really appreciated because, you know, we, we, more eyes, the better. We do feel confident in the, the product that we're putting out there, but you're more than welcome to review it. And if you have any feedback on, on what has been done on that, on the work side to date, we have until the nineteenth is the day I'll be distributing the first sort of draft of, of the draft warrant language. And I was hoping that the fourteenth or fifteenth, if you have any comments by then on this, if it's, you know, a tweak here or tweak there, that would give us time for General Code to make any final updates to the document before I send it out on the nineteenth, the first version for everyone's review. So my hope would be if you have a chance and you're interested to take a look at it, if you have comments by the, say, the fourteenth, ideally fifteenth would be okay. That would be of February, that would be great. Wanted to make sure you had a copy of it, though, early in the process in case there was anything needed.
Thank you, Kevin.
I, 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 my, my opinion is that this is a housekeeping issue. In my opinion, a very important housekeeping issue. And my opinion, we've talked about it enough, let's, let's move on.
So the septic loan program, any update, Kevin, relative to findings with your discussion with the banks?
Yeah, so I, I had a conversation to find out what are really the options for people if, if we don't offer the septic option. There's a few options. You can do a reverse mortgage on your home, take money out that way. You could also, if rates are low like they are right now, where they're two-point-five, two-point-six, with good credit up to maybe two-point-nine, hovering close to three percent for a primary resident, you could, you could refinance your home and be able to pull at that time equity out of the home to, to pay for those, those improvements if you have that equity. And then the other option is, is a home equity loan of credit. And some people already have them, some people might have to go out and, and get one. But if you have equity in your home, you don't want to refi because maybe the rates go up in the next month and they double and you have a great rate that you just refi for, but you need to replace your septic. That's another option for people. And, and that's typically an adjustable rate. It's prime plus half a percent, prime plus one percent typically. And primes right now, I think it's somewhere between three and a quarter, three-seventy-five, somewhere in that range. So those are some of the options people might have. You know, from a straight dollars and cents standpoint, I think we could, if we adopted the septic loan program, we could solidify a fixed rate, two percent, three percent, something like that for people who are interested in it. But there certainly are other options for people if they do find themselves in that situation where they want to stay in their home, they can't necessarily afford it with cash to possibly find an alternative way to make the improvements necessary.
Kevin, I missed the first couple of sentences that you said. Did you get any of that input from any of the banks around? Did you talk to any of the banks?
I did. I, and I already had some ideas of different options that the bank might offer. Just for, for most of the general public, there might be people out there with different situations that might not be eligible for some of these even too, if they have poor credit or other factors, like they don't have the equity in their home. But there's, those are generally what the, the feedback I received back were some of the options from a financing standpoint.
What was, what, what do you think the attitude of the banks were about thinking about us competing with them?
I didn't really receive that input per se. I kind of just asked, I said, you know, what, what are the options? If I had a failed septic system and I couldn't afford to pay it in cash, what, what could I do? And those were, they laid out the different options and then did a little research into the rates associated with those.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin on this one?
Just to answer to Boyd's question, I don't think the banks care about the competition from one or two loans every three years or so. I don't, I don't think they're concerned.
I, I agree, I'm sure.
So it sounds like, Kevin, there are options that might be, you know, one or two percentage points higher than perhaps something that we could offer as a, a town.
Yeah. And like I said, we have, we have more control, we would have more control over the applicant, per each applicant that comes in, if we wanted to loan it or not. The banks have sort of their fixed models that they look at candidates by. And so we might have more flexibility with them. Our rates might be a little bit lower. But there, if someone needed cash, for most people, I can't say every single case that comes through, they could go to the bank and be able to obtain the loan or the HELOC or the reverse mortgage or what have you, or refi. But most cases, there are other options people could take advantage of. As long as they have that equity, that's kind of a big important part of it, though.
Okay.
Do you have any examples of anybody who was unable to get something when they needed it?
I don't. Wendy has had a handful of people reach out over the course of the last twelve months asking about it and if we would consider offering it. I can go back to her and ask specifically if any of them had, if it was more, it would be nice if you had a town, or I wasn't able to have the monies to do this and this is my only option left would be the town. I could, I could ask that question if that's a, something you folks would like me to get clarity on.
Interestingly enough, we went through this last year already with a, as a proposal that was put forward and we rejected it. We can continue to take on the same question each year, but it seems to me that we should take some learning from what we did last year.
What, what are we going to do about trying to make sure that the town gets paid? Are we going to have a lien on their house? Are we going to have a, something that guarantee that they're going to pay the debt?
That's the one thing that the law does, is it provides a vehicle for collecting the money through the tax liens and that. That's the one thing that this law does that's different from going to the outside world.
Okay.
But it does have all the, the added procedures in place about who would we offer this to? What would be the threshold? You know, as we mentioned before, if you're making three-hundred thousand dollars and you'd just rather get a one percent loan from the, the town versus go to a bank and pay three percent? What's the income? What is the asset level? What other considerations? Collection procedures? There's a lot involved in, in setting this up, which is why I believe we rejected it last year. But if, oh, go ahead, Dick.
I agree, I agree with Dick, he's shaking his head. I agree with both of you.
Okay, I think probably we have enough input on this one. Kevin, the sign ordinance, number three?
Yep, that's a simple one. We talked about that one before, the next action item. I, Glenn's been involved in it, our building inspector. I've, at this point, we all collectively have an understanding of what we're looking at trying to do. So I've, I've talked with KP when we had our conversation last week. I said, at this point, you have a better handle on any exposure the town has based on how the current bylaw is written. You folks should take the stab at, you know, the, specifically the timing of the signs going out and the signs having to come down, and the First Amendment rights associated with that. So they're going to just do a, a, a red line on that, on the existing one, KP Law will. And then Glenn and I will review that. And if there's any, and share that obviously with you folks. And if there's any issues, well, we, we can make the determination. But I don't have something that I can show you today necessarily, but just general concept of this, that's where we're at.
I don't think there's any question.
I'd like to make a suggestion on this. This is a relatively slight change that we're trying to make to a zoning bylaw. The, the issue has in part how we go about enforcing it. Now, we should have, we should enforce our laws, so to speak. But if it's obvious that this is an area that is a concern because of free speech and that, and that's the way I feel about all this political stuff. I think it's a mess to keep trying to control political stuff, which we know we can't control in the first place. But because, especially because it's a small thing, and we really don't have a liability if we don't spend time going chasing after these things. And we do want to have our building inspector spend less time chasing things. I would say that it's perhaps not worth the effort at this time to do it. We, again, it has to go through the planning board, it has to go through the hearings for zoning, whatever else. I think for this particular change, as small as it is, I don't think it's worth it at this time. The next time we do a more significant change to the signed bylaw, I think at that point, we should include this as part of that. But at this point, again, my feeling is it's too small and not worth the effort to try to go through all of the efforts it takes to make a zoning change.
I would ask anybody to correct me if I'm wrong, but my suspicion is this comes about from the building inspector because of the pressure that we put on him six months or a year ago about enforcing our signed bylaw. And, and I suspect that he needed to, he wanted to put some teeth in this thing to help him do that, okay? However, that's my suspicion. And I think, I think probably, I agree with Dick. And then, you know, this is a, to make this kind of relatively insignificant change is complicated and there's a lot of work to do.
Do we not run the risk that if we don't make the change, then in, you know, like we saw people fighting with each other this last November, that somebody's going to pull up the bylaw and say, why are you not enforcing what it says right here on the bylaw?
Yeah, I think this is pretty straightforward. Our bylaw cannot be enforced at the state level. If we know the wording that needs to be changed, why is this complex? Why wouldn't we just make this change to this one bylaw?
Basically, we're eliminating, eliminating a part of the bylaw, right? The sixty-day part of it.
In, in essence, I haven't, I haven't seen a, a red line version in my hand yet, but that's what the discussions have been. And it's just to, and to your point, Mr. Uck, absolutely, that, that is the, it, it's really difficult to have something in writing that a neighbor comes up and says, hey, this, this person's in violation. And then we say, well, we're not actually enforcing that law as it's written. And then they'll say, we want to be as consistent as possible with what the Constitution lays out. And it hopefully will be as simple, it didn't seem when I had the conversation with KP that this was a heavy lift by any means. It was just basically eliminating the language specifically that's problematic, that we've had lawyers contact us complaining about is within the bylaw.
And we brought it this far, we've had the discussion, we had the issue, we made a decision. It's just a matter of making that minor change to the wording. I'm not sure why we wouldn't just move forward with it.
I just, I, I think it's dangerous to set as a precedent that, oh, well, it's on the books, but we're just going to ignore it as a matter of practicality. I don't think you can do that. I mean, it works right now, but all it takes is one person to say, listen, it's in the bylaws. You just can't ignore your own bylaws. You have to go enforce this. Now we're in trouble because we're enforcing something that isn't constitutionally defendable.
Dick, do you see more work to this than just doing the wording change that KP thought was pretty straightforward?
Well, it goes through a public hearing and all that sort of thing. If we're going to do that, I'm going to then ask for an additional change to the signed bylaw. There's one place that we kind of made an error the last time we made a change. And it has to do with just adding a small entry of having A-frames signs as a temporary sign. I can't remember exactly the area, but if we're going to go through that effort to make a change to the bylaw, then we should also include that thing. The, the issue is that, yeah, you're right, Marshall. If somebody complains, but you got to explain to them that it's not going to make it to the law. It goes to the state, we're going to lose, it's going to cost us money and therefore, we're not spending time on it now. We'll take care of it as far as correcting our, or updating our bylaws in the future. But if you want to continue to do it, let's do it. But then I would also ask that we fix at least the other thing if we're going to open it up.
I'm just guessing that the people who would be most likely involved in fighting with each other over something like this would be the people who wouldn't care that they would ultimately lose, but would like to stir the pot and cause us more issues. So if we can, if we can strike out this part before we ever get to that, I think it's a, it's maybe a little bit of a hassle now, but it saves us what could potentially be a lot of hassle down the line.
Is that the case, that we're going to need a public hearing on this one change?
Political signs than, than we're talking about here. Doing this change is not going to fix our problems with political signs, but.
Yeah, but here's one.
Let's, let's.
I think it's one easily identifiable thing that we couldn't defend. And so if we can just slash it out, then, then we're on our way.
So this requires a public hearing, Dick, you're saying?
Yes, yes. Well, we can do it. I mean, we have to get it to the planning board right away and it can be done. But we need to get it to them like post-aze because they need to get that all scheduled. That's fine.
Kevin, are they on board with this?
I would also ask that we, and the planning board can take care of this, to get that one other fix in there. The problem is, again, we are wide open on our political signage in that thing. But all right, let's, let's.
You know, I would just say about those A-frames, I think that's a bigger issue.
No, it isn't. It's, it's something that got dropped out. We need to, we should put it in there because people, if you want some, people are using them like temporary signs, but we're not enforcing it because, but we should enforce it because we don't allow it in our temporaries.
Maybe I'm not understanding what you're suggesting. Maybe I'm not understanding what you're suggesting, Dick. I know that we had people not allowed to put out A-frame signs for more than thirty days over the course of the year. What piece is missing from the bylaw?
The A-frames are totally removed from the temporary signage because they were not going to be temporary signage, they were going to be, quote, permanent signage. They need to be put back in that area of fourteen days, thirty days, as a temporary kind of sign. I think of those, it's just like within a set of parentheses, parenthetical comments, you got to add that. I, I don't remember, not in front of me, I didn't worry about it because nobody was enforcing it. But if we, if, again, if we open this up, we should just do that too. It's a very simple, straightforward thing. And, and the zoning board knows about it also.
Kevin, is, is planning on board with this? Have you had discussions for the political signage issue?
So I, yes, I've talked with the Chair of the Planning Board before about the, the, the generalities and the, some of the issues that we've been seeing regarding specifically when we were dealing with political signs in, previously.
Here's my suggestion, here's my suggestion, that we go now, we all agree we're going to do this because it cleans up our stuff. We go to the planning board and say, we, we would ask you to take care of this particular thing in the signs and anything else that you think needs to be corrected in the, in the signed bylaw. So leave it up to them and they'll come up.
Fine, it's fine with me.
With the, I'm curious, historically, it sounded like the A-frames were included and they were taken out of the bylaws. Is there, when they moved?
Just to be careful, they were moved because they were no longer going to be limited by the thirty days. So they were moved before the thing went to press, they were taken out because it was a problem. But we didn't put it back into the thing after it went, before it went to press. It went to press in the, in the, here, okay. So it was, it was rewritten, we went to a public meeting with the rewrite. The public meeting determined that the rewrite was wrong. So it was pulled out of that text in, at the public meeting, so to speak, not as, okay. It was pulled out of that text, but the concomitant part of putting it back didn't occur because it is an oversight. And so it went forward to the town meeting without it being put back in as it had been before.
So it's a clerical error.
Yeah, okay.
Is it possible?
It's not a clerical error, I mean, it's.
Well, it wasn't, it, it's not substance. It's just that the wording wasn't put back to the original state when it went to the town meeting?
Right, which was an, which was, which is a valid thing to do. We don't want signs, we don't want A-frame signs at all. I mean, that's a possible thing to say. We didn't, we didn't mean that. It's still a valid thing to do, but we didn't mean it. So we're trying to get it back to what we really mean.
Martha probably knows all about this, Kevin. Could you just raise this with her?
Sure, I was going to say.
Leave it up to them. We, we direct it to them. If they don't want to do it, we'll just do this sixty-day thing. But let them, let them know that we're interested in them doing whatever they want to do with the signed bylaw to improve it.
Okay, item number four, water restriction bylaw.
So we're, we're very fortunate today to have Greg Crom, our water superintendent, with us, who can hopefully give us an update on what that is in more detail. I shared with you at the last meeting that Greg was, had some language he was going to share with me by midweek this week. And Greg, maybe you can get into some of the details associated with it and then answer any questions that the board might have.
Sure, the, the biggest change is that the current bylaw references our water management withdrawal permit and stream flow standards that are referenced in that permit as far as when water restrictions go into effect based on, if so, if you have a stream flow. So we gave up our permit. So now the, the bylaw references something that doesn't really exist anymore. So we need to take those, I think, stream flow numbers that were in our permit and incorporate them into the bylaw and take out references to the permit because we don't have a permit any longer. So that's not a huge issue. There are some other things that are worth considering. I know Phil has been pretty vocal about allowing some irrigation during a mandatory ban. So right now we kind of have, um, no ban, a voluntary ban and a mandatory ban where you can't use an irrigation system at all. He's advocating for like another phase in between a voluntary and a, and the current mandatory ban where it's, it's mandatory and you can only use your irrigation system, say on, on even days or some such arrangement so that people can use it a little bit before it goes completely off. And there's also.
Wait, what was there?
Who was asking for that?
Uh, Phil has suggested that, we were talking about last fall.
Phil Knowles.
Phil Knowles, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the rationale behind that next level, Greg?
Well, our, our current bylaw is based on the requirements that were in the permit. So now that we don't have a permit, we have a little bit more flexibility. And that would give, by having that extra phase would give some people, you know, some additional watering, um, during, but limited to certain times of the week.
So people with irrigation systems would be able to use theirs, but people with above-ground sprinklers could not?
Uh, or that, that depends. So we could, we could allow that. Um, if you're going to allow irrigation systems, I think you could probably allow the other things as well. Um, it's just a matter of, you know, how that ties into the existing, you know, structure. What is, are we based on a flow rate? Is it some other, um, consideration? So those things, um, we probably need to talk about. Um, also, the other issue is, um, you know, private wells. Our permit made us, uh, make a choice between, um, regulating private wells and giving everybody the opportunity to hand water a little bit or only the public water, or the public water customers wouldn't be able to water at all. So we can talk about, um, possible changes regarding private wells. You know, there's really three classifications of water users. There's people that have exclusively used town water. There's people that exclusively use private wells for domestic and outside use. And the people in the middle, which I think, um, D E P probably was trying to get to when they had the permit conditions, use our water for domestic purposes and have a private well that they can use that well for irrigation. Um, and whether we want to make that distinction between those three different groups. You know, I, I grew up in town on a well and I think private well owners tend to be the most conservative users of water in town, um, because they rely on it for their domestic use as well as irrigation. So I think their irrigation use is pretty limited. It's really the people that have unlimited domestic supply by connecting to us and can, you know, if their irrigation well runs dry, you know, that's not as big a concern.
Greg, have you taken a stab at what changes you're recommending? And, and just like we've talked, irrigation versus above ground, is it every other day? I mean, do you know what it is you're proposing?
I, I have a, a draft that, um, that addresses the removal of the permit. I'm working on some language to, to work on the wells. And I started working on, um, some language for, uh, Phil's suggestion of having another kind of in-between mandatory ban. The issue I, I, I'm kind of dealing with now is, you know, we are likely going to have to get a, a water management permit, whether it be at some point in the future. Who knows how far away it is. But, you know, part of, um, that process, they're going to look at what we're doing with the supply we already have. So in some ways you don't want to stray too far from what is being, what was required in the permit. But, you know, we do have some flexibility. I think we should probably take advantage of it. So it's where that, that boundary is. Um, and it's, it's a lot of a policy decision. You know, in some ways it was nice having the permit because the rules were made for us. Now we can make our own rules and it's, uh, it gives us some more flexibility. But, you know, it, it's finding the balance is a bit more difficult.
And can you explain why to everyone here? Why we no longer need a withdrawal permit, uh, based on what the state does? But we still, we still withdraw water. So, and the reason for that is our.
So there's, there's really two classifications of water. The, the Water Management Act permit, um, was enacted back in the eighties. And at that time they looked at what everybody had been using kind of on a historical basis. And they, it gave everybody what's called a registered volume. And it's essentially your water rights that you've been using historically. So they just gave us rights to that water. For us, it was, it was about 430,000 gallons a day, um, on an annual, annual average. Anything beyond that, um, and I think we, we started asking, filed for a permit back when we, um, took over Scaffington's property over on Perkins Row. Uh, we filed for a water management permit and we were able to get, um, another 170,000 gallons per day with additional steps going up over the years, assuming population growth, et cetera. During a five-year permit review and as a result of some litigation that the, uh, watershed folks had with the state, we had that cut back substantially so that in total during the summer, we couldn't exceed more than 550,000 gallons per day. And the, the permit expired actually in 2009, 2009, but because of, um, the great recession and then permit extensions, and it, it lived on for a number of years. And as a result of that renewal process, we were looking at only getting 30,000 gallons per day.
More than our, more than our grandfather.
More than our, more than our registered, more than our registered volume, which we were living, we were, we were below our registered volume, um, for a number of years. We're actually, you know, withdrawal wise, we, we haven't been this low since the 1970s. So one of those things is you look at that 30,000, is it really worth all these extra conditions? Um, one of the issues we are going to run up against with a, a new permit is, uh, the last cold water fishery in the Ipswich River Basin is near the North Street Pumping Station, which is our prime source. It's out behind Aaron Drive. Um, so we were gonna, I think, be on the hook for a lot of, um, additional conditions and, um, minimization, uh, plans and all kinds of other stuff. And we're looking at that and it didn't seem like the 30,000 gallons per day was worth it. And another thing is with the permit, you get your registered volume plus the permit volume, and that's a hard number. So we were like, we were looking at getting 460,000 gallons a day and no more. Without the permit, you get into this area where D E P doesn't have the authority to regulate you unless you are using more than 100,000 gallons per day beyond your registered volume. So our, by, by getting rid of the permit, our essentially annual, uh, average day volume will go up to something along the lines of 530,000 gallons per day before we start running into regulatory problems. So it looked like there was some upside, a lot of downside to, you know, more. It was, it was more, looked to be a bit more beneficial to abandon the permit and see how it goes. And that's kind of where we're at.
Did you mention we might be applying for another permit though?
I think we will in the future. If, if and when we go for, uh, a connection with another water supplier, especially if it's from outside the Ipswich River Basin, you have to file for a, um, Inter Basin Transfer Act permit. And that will, you know, some of this stuff will probably play into that. If we end up needing the water before we are able to get water from outside the basin, we, we would have to apply for a new permit. Uh, and all those conditions that we were living with before would likely resurface.
You, you're referring to like Quabbe River.
What's that?
You're referring to like Quabbe, Quabbe River of water.
Yeah, if we were, if we were to join the, uh, if we were to join the Mass Water Resources Association, um, and get water from the Quabbe, we would have to file for an Inter Basin Transfer Act because the water is traveling through different basins to get here. And I think probably if we were going to connect to Salem Beverly Water Board for any substantial volume, uh, we would probably have to get a permit for that as well.
Are you anticipating that, Greg?
I have no reason to assume that we're going to need those things. The biggest challenge we would have is if we had some major contaminations which we had probably getting rid of. But our, our water in Topsfield, we have plenty of it. So it's not as if we're running dry.
Yeah, I think, if we saw a huge, a huge, um, you know, 40B development one after another that ramps up our consumption, um, then we can run into issues. But then on the other hand, you know, you can drive down the, the overall withdrawal by really cracking down on irrigation. So there, there are ways to, you know, you know, uh, make our water go further than it is currently projected to, but it means less irrigation essentially if, if, if the, if use is going up on a, on a popular, on a population basis.
Greg, uh, Greg, can, can you, um, can you get all this written up in such a fashion and that you can explain this succinctly on town meeting floor? Because, uh, if we can't do that, then forget about it. But you and your group of experts should be able to do that. The question is, can you do it in the time that you've got allotted here?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what I need to do is, is write up, you know, the changes that we need to make because of the lack of a permit, which we have. And then kind of incorporate a series of options for, say, you know, Phil's suggestion of having a, another phase in the water ban and then another few options for, you know, what we could do irrigation wise related to wells. And then, you know, kind of, you know, between Kevin, myself and, and you folks, decide which option to bring to town meeting.
So Greg, one thing too is. At town meeting board because it's going to be easier to do some things than it is now. So the change is not necessarily so much getting out of the permit as it is. The result is that we can now do the following because we have this grandfathering that we're going against instead of the permit. So I think it's an easier, easy sell, especially, uh, with those who have wells.
And we, and we don't necessarily have to, we don't necessarily have to tackle the well issue this year. We can do, just get rid of the permit and then take another year to talk about the well issue. If that's going to be, that's probably going to be the hottest topic.
But remember, remember, Phil, Phil needs to get the, uh, the watering because he's now at English Common where they want to be able to use the sprinkles.
Kevin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, I, you know, Greg and I have, have just taken over the water component of this, as you all know. And, and dealing with the PFAS is the primary, uh, all-consuming water component lately. I, I was aware of some of the permitting changes from the reference within the document, which makes all the sense in the world, um, to clean that up. Um, I think we, we certainly, Greg and I need to probably have a conversation too about the, um, a, a, a middle step and what that would look like. Cause I mean, I've got questions around, um, you know, how do we police that? Uh, you know, it's already something that's an issue from a policing standpoint, people watering. And if you add another layer, it's easier for people to just kind of say, oh, just flip it on and let someone try to catch me now. I didn't know it was this, this phase that we're in. Um, and, and it might cause some confusion to people too. I don't know. And, and I'd like to see what other communities have looked at when it comes to these types of multiple phases of, of options. Then obviously we talked about this too, is if we have a permit in the future, uh, that we go for, whether it's with one of the water, uh, you know, MWR or, um, Beverly, uh, Salem Beverly or, or other, if we go back to having a per, permit locally for some reason, um, what does that impact? We then have to change people's behaviors to say, oh, we're taking away something that we've granted to you. So I, I mean, my point of bringing these up is I just have some questions that Greg and I haven't had a chance to flush out yet myself. So I don't know if, from a timing standpoint, if this is the year to do it because we are kind of getting a little bit close to the deadlines. But, um, I'll, between now and Thursday, Greg and I, if it's okay with the board, we'll talk a little bit more of the details of this. And I can talk, you know, because I don't think we're, we talked about voting, not voting. I think there's a lot of unknowns on this one in particular at this point. Um, but I'll get some more information and bring it back to you folks.
That sounds great. And regardless, it would be moving forward just to change the language relative to the permit and the regulations, because that's just a cleanup. That, that's not a change in what we're allowing.
Greg's, yes.
Great, all right, thank you. Um, thanks, Greg. Moving on to the marijuana bylaw.
Um, so marijuana bylaw, um, in essence, with this, we, we talked a little bit about this, so I'll just be brief. We are using the state law and the fines associated with any violations of open container, um, when we write citations locally. We are looking to, at the op, option of having a local, um, open container law that can be written at the local level, um, uh, that does not currently exist, which would allow it to then, if need be, become a criminal issue complaint if someone were to, um, um, not respond to that citation if, if necessary. Gives a little bit more teeth to it at the end of the day. Um, right now, so citations written, someone ignores it. Um, there's really no ramifications at this point, um, because we don't have a local law. So Chief and I actually spent some time last night again on this. We were debriefing a number of different things. We talked a little bit about this. So I, I'd like to hand it over to Chief, how he did, to maybe give a little bit more insight into what this would look like, uh, and his thoughts, uh, around it. So Chief, I'll hand it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, the purpose of the, uh, town bylaw is, is the town is the, uh, authority in the regulations of how we're going to handle the open container and preventing people from walking down the street and smoking, uh, marijuana. So we don't have a huge problem in the town of Topsfield. Our biggest, uh, problems come with the Topsfield Fair where we have numerous violations of an open container. We also have people walking through the midway that think it's okay to, uh, smoke marijuana. And we have asked, because it's legalized, we have no authority other than the town adopting a bylaw that authorizes the police department to write a civil citation. Uh, on the civil citation, then we can enforce a $500 fine for an open container or a $100 fine, a civil citation for somebody that exceeds one, uh, one ounce of marijuana. Uh, then we can issue a $100 citation. But in the absence of a town bylaw, we have no authority. All we can do is ask them to put it out because it's legal and they can go on their merry way, uh, after that. So the, uh, the issues come about is that, uh, we, you know, without the authority, uh, that there's no jurisdiction in the sense that we can enforce, uh, the presence of, of marijuana. So that's the essence of it. Um, other than that, you know, if we did adopt a, uh, a town bylaw, we still have to take a look at when the, um, violator, uh, fails to pay. And then if they fail to pay, then we have to offer them a hearing. Or if they object to the, uh, the violation, the civil, uh, citation, they have a right of appeal, uh, that they would have to notify us that they object to the citation. They have a right of appeal and they have to notify us and within 21 days. We would have to hold a hearing. We can, uh, conclude whatever we want. We can dismiss it. We can lower the fine. We can negotiate with them. Um, and then if they still fail to, um, pay, then we could take a look at the court system on, not on the civil citation, but more on the, them, um, failing to, to pay and adhere to a town bylaw. Then we would take it to the, uh, the next level. But it is a, it's legal. Uh, so again, you run into a, uh, the issue of filing a criminal complaint, we would actually have to act on the town bylaw violation, not on the, the, their actions of doing something legal per the Massachusetts laws, so.
Chief, would this be a misdemeanor if this were a bylaw?
No, it's, it's, it's not criminal. It, it's legal, so it's a town bylaw civil citation. It's like, like failing to, uh, register your dog.
Okay, and the hearing is conducted by whom?
Well, uh, we, we have never conducted a hearing. So, uh, technically, uh, we actually have civil citations that are not enforceable. Uh, we do write them. Uh, some people just pay them and we just collect the money, uh, goes into the general fund. But when people object to it, and, uh, this past year really came to light, uh, for me, uh, in this current position because I received, um, six appeals. So as a court officer, I received them and not in the capacity as the chief of police because it was during the last fear that we had, that we, uh, I received the, uh, appeals. So I, I went to Beth and I went to, um, the town administrator, uh, at that time and said, what do you want me to do with these? Because it states right on the citation that they're entitled to an appeal by the clerk of the town. And no one wanted to do anything about it. So they're still sitting on my desk, uh, because there's no action that can be taken and they didn't pay. I was hoping that we could have a general hearing. I was hoping that we could have a general hearing. I was more than happy to reduce the 500 to 100 and say, you know what? We took in $600 for the town. Uh, the violator is going to be happy. Uh, I saved him $400. And that's just, uh, but again, i- it's not enforceable unless we have a town by law. And we make a decision of how we're going to conduct hearings. So I think there's a larger discussion, uh, with the, uh, select board members and the town administrator and the clerk. Again, uh, we can, we can hold the hearings here. I'm just not, um, looks a little like we have a biased opinion since we wrote the citation that would actually reverse our decision. So I'd want it to look more, uh, of a, uh, sort of a, a cleaner, unbiased, um, opinion, but.
Sounds to me like a pretty important tool that he'd like to have in his toolbox.
And that's all it is.
And the dollar values, would those go into the, uh, the wording here, Chief?
Yeah, I already have. I can, I can, uh, scan and send you over what a, uh, our civil, uh, citation looks like. It all gives them the right of the appeal, tells them the timeframe, tells them the chapter and section of the violation, tells them the amount of the fine. So we already have those. It just, as I said, it's not enforceable. So, uh, I feel a little uncomfortable telling the officers, go out and write these because, but we do. We hope for the best, uh, but when somebody fails to pay, there's no recourse on our part.
So we do have something already that we passed probably five, six years ago, correct? That's what you're working with?
Uh, I don't believe there's any, there's a cultivation, uh, of marijuana, but there's nothing for the possession of or the smoking marijuana in public. Or open container of marijuana.
We, we had, I thought we had something with the possession that was a hundred dollar fine. Uh, that, that was some time ago.
Uh, yes, we still have those civil citations, but they're not enforceable, as I said, because-
That's what I'm saying. We have those and we put them in before, but your concern is that they're not enforceable without having the ability to do it, a, uh, an appeal.
Uh, they're not enforceable, uh, for, for us either way, because there's no po- no town by law. And the law states that the officer must issue a town by law or city ordinance ticket if, if there is a town by law. Other than that, we can't even be issuing these. We do, but-
And it has no teeth.
Absolutely.
But under, uh, under what, uh, provisions do we issue them then?
Under what provisions?
Are we, are we issuing the citations?
We do it under the 94C, chapter 32L. Um, and, uh, chapter, uh, 32N is the procedural guidelines, uh, for that. So it's 94C, section 32, 32N. Um, but that's, uh, that's again for the open container of marijuana. Uh, in the open container, uh, there's a couple of different sections. So it'd be chapter, chapter 94C, 13D, as in Delta, for the open container, which is the $500. And that's, uh, any marijuana, uh, inside a motor vehicle or outside a motor vehicle, uh, that is not in a, uh, sealed, sealed bag. And when they talk about se- sealed, it has to be the sort of airtight sealed that it was purchased in.
The, the concept being that marijuana is legal, but you're going to use it in your house and not out in the open? Is that the concept? I'll have to read these laws and understand. Okay. So, uh, if we pass, if we, uh, create a by law as you're requesting, there's still then the need to be able to have an appeal process.
Correct.
So we're going to add some administrative work to what, what we already do in order to collect the money if somebody objects to it?
That is correct.
Okay. And how many of these have we issued? Not illegally, um, without authority. How many of these have we issued on an annual basis without authority over the last couple of years, roughly?
Uh, 12 to 20.
And how many have requested an appeal? Half of them? A third of them? From what you said, six, so maybe a third of them?
Yeah, half to a third, yes.
And the rest, okay, good. Right. And, and those are primarily for-
You have a third, you have a third that pay, a third that appeals and a third that doesn't do anything.
And how many of those 100 is, and how many of those 500s?
Um, the ju- majority of them in the last, uh, round was all 500s.
Okay. I can see what they would request an appeal and do nothing. That's the answer. Okay. So, so you do have wording that we can have right now? Can you provide that?
Yeah, I have the, uh, citation right here that I could, uh, scan and then send.
Okay. Can, can we get that, Kevin, uh, sent out to the, the board to take a look at so we know what, what we're gonna put on, if we're gonna put it on?
Are you looking at the actual by law language or are you looking at the citation language?
The by law language.
So we have a version that-
What's the difference? What's the difference between the by law language and citation? Citation language is what you hand somebody.
Well, that's right. I mean, the, I'm just, so I, the reason I ask the question is I can get what Chief just held up or I could, KP Laws provide us with, um, um, language that, that they used in other communities stock, boilerplate language for, um, for marijuana, um, local by law that I could forward along to you that, that they've, they've identified and provided at the request because we were looking at this as an option to move forward. So I can send that over to you if that's what you're ultimately looking for.
Could, could I just ask this, Chief? To what extent do you think somebody, uh, within the marijuana business is going to take off after the state law and get it changed anyway so that it's not an issue? You know, you know, we've sometimes tried to stop something and we find out that a year later the state makes it totally available to everybody or something. Do you have a s- a sense of what might happen here?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think they've, uh, they've already spoken. The vote is, it's, it's legal. And the issue is that where it becomes a concern for us is these people smoking it in public and then operating a, a motor vehicle, uh, putting, uh, all, uh, commuters at risk. So my con- my concern is having some sort of avenue, uh, as Mr. Jackson said, a tool and a two, uh, a tool and a toolbox to actually stop these people, uh, enforce it. And more importantly, to confiscate the marijuana without the town by law. Um, I, I, all I can say is put it out and have a great day.
Okay, great.
Right. And with more and more, um, you know, marijuana shops opening up, are you anticipating, Chief, this is just going to become more prevalent?
I do. What I've seen the last since it's become, uh, legal is we, we probably have more interactions with people smoking marijuana than drinking alcohol. And at the fair, it's, it's out, out of control. Uh, you go to parking lot A, um, South Gate, you, you smell it, you know, a couple hundred feet away. You know, and that's where we have so many citations because, hey, we put plainclothes officers out there. They walk around, they look for the people drinking, they, they smell the marijuana, the people are sitting in their cars. And that's why we have so many citations during the Topsfield Fair. You know, we do have some citations in the roadway when on a motor vehicle stop, because it's like Cheech and Chong driving by you that you, uh, you can smell it and, uh, then you stop them. And, and more importantly, you're stopping them to make sure, uh, the, the public is not at risk of them being impaired while they're driving.
Okay, that's Chiefs. Um, and, and I would anticipate, Chief, the more citations you issue, that since you're saying the majority are $500, that third that pays will more than cover the cost of the administrative hearings for the third that requests it.
I believe so, but I haven't, uh, that wasn't the premise behind it. It was more of the fact, and I didn't calculate out, uh, costs versus, uh, the benefits. Uh, it was more important to actually, uh, have some, uh, bite to these citations and have it somewhat enforceable.
So you stopped the spread. Um, we have come forward with the verbiage for this. Would you be coming forward with a proposal then for the hearings as well?
I, uh, I, I believe we, we would have to have a, a whole comprehensive program of how this is going to be handled and whether the police department handles them. And I totally understand, uh, Ms. Willis not being comfortable, uh, doing this or not even sure it's in her job description. Uh, but again, from the, uh, the optics of it, you know, uh, having a hearing at the police department, uh, I'm not sure that's a, a good, uh, good optics for a person coming in for an appeal. But we are more than happy to do it. We do appeals all the time. Uh, we sit in appeals. It's the police officer versus the defendant. And, uh, you know, there's just a moderator there is the clerk of the courts that sits there. And that's all we would be asking sort of Ms. Willis to do is to sit there. I've, I've already walked her through the process. Um, you know, there's, it's whole scripted. Uh, I give the account of the story. The defendant gets to ask me questions. The defendant gives them, uh, an opportunity to say their side of the story. And, uh, Beth would say, uh, we're agreeable to reduce the $500 to 100. Are you agreeable to that? And they say, sure, that's great. And then they, sometimes they pay or sometimes they send a check in the next 20 days. But again, if they don't, then we still don't have a lot of recourse.
Do other towns have these bylaws set up, Chief, and how do they handle the hearings?
Uh, the, um, some, some communities do. Uh, I, I have reached out to, uh, Hamilton and One M and Middleton and, and they, uh, none of the, of the local communities have the town bylaws around this immediate area. Um, some of them just don't believe it's, you know, since it's legalized, it's, it's not worth it. I feel differently about it and that's why I'm bringing it, uh, forward, because I'm, I'm more of a, um, sort of anti-drug person. I'm also, uh, really, um, you know, a, uh, proponent of public safety. And I just think that when we have drugs out there and people getting in cars, uh, that's a recipe for a disaster. And, uh, uh, public safety is paramount to me. So this is, this is, uh, I have numerous conversations with, uh, you know, Mr. Town Administrator, and that's why I'm bringing it forward. But, you know, if the, I know, uh, Bloxford tried to bring it forward a year or two ago and was immediately shot down by the residents. There's a, uh, very liberal community, a lot of physicians that think this is okay. And so, you know, uh, we're gonna be, have to be prepared for this. It's not going to be a overwhelming, you know, a majority may, uh, may view this. But I think it's worth it to go forward with it and let the townspeople speak.
So Chief, does the state allow people to have open containers right now or must they smoke in their house?
Uh, it's, uh, all for medical purposes, uh, majority of them. Uh, again, uh, it's legal to have, um, a, uh, less than an ounce of marijuana, which is, in my opinion, is a lot. Uh, one ounce, uh, constitutes about 30 to 36 marijuana joints, which I think that's a lot of marijuana to be carrying around in your pockets and be legal about it. Uh, but again, if somebody's smoking it, uh, in public, uh, then we, with this by law, we, we can, uh, take some action. If somebody's sitting in their car and they have any container that's open, we can confiscate that and write them a citation, so.
Is it legal for, according to the state, for someone to be walking down the street smoking a joint?
No, actually there's, there's documents out there that says that you, you just can't walk around, be smoking, uh, you know, marijuana. So we, but again, we can only ask them to put it out.
Right.
I would invite any of you to come walk around the government center here in Boston and see how many people are paying attention to that particular part of the law. Well, I have it for a medical reason. Does that make a difference that they're smoking it at the fair and they have something from their doctor that says it's, um, medical?
It's okay for them to be carrying it with them with their medical marijuana card. Uh, again, it doesn't give them the right to subject, um, all the other patrons to the, the smoking of the marijuana in public.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief of, of, Chief of all the towns that you mentioned that don't have a by law, uh, not a one of them has a thing like the Topsfield Fair that attracts, uh, four to 500,000 people every fall.
That's why a lot of, uh, the chiefs won't move it forward because they, you know, the occasional stop here or there. It, it's not, it's not something that, uh, um, that we're accustomed to and that we have, uh, we're, we're unique in that situation. Absolutely.
So before the chief comes back with the, the wording, are there any other questions, um, for him before we move on to his next issue, which is thickly settled?
I, I just, I think it's worth a settle. So from my perspective, if I have to explain this to somebody going into town meeting, I would say this is similar to having an open bottle of beer or, uh, a glass of wine in the public walking down, uh, Center of Mean Street or at the Topsfield Fair. We, we don't allow that with alcohol. All that this is doing is stopping it from being, from marijuana, which is legal, from being used publicly, just as we limit how alcohol is being used publicly. That's the way I would tend to explain it. And I think that's about as far as I could go. As far as the advantages to the town, I, I like this idea that you can confiscate it so that it, uh, it, it doesn't continue to be a problem for this particular person at the fair for, well, as an, as the example. As far as being ready for town meeting, I, I think you said it, Lynn, essentially, we need to have our ducks in a row to be able to explain how it, there's questions, how would the appeal work? What would it be, et cetera? So we'd have to have all of, in my mind, we have to have all of those things written out already before we go into town meeting. Lastly, uh, while we have all the procedures and such written out, we do not necessarily have to have the appeal. We can simply let them go scoff law, uh, just, uh, don't do it as some people do it now. That's not good in my mind, but we could do that, that way if we, we don't have to spend the money chasing the money. But, uh, it becomes an option that we have.
Just again, you're, you're spot on. Uh, your analogy of this open container of alcohol, open container marijuana is the perfect analogy. Uh, that's what it is. You know, we don't walk around with a beer in our hand. We shouldn't walk around with a, uh, marijuana joint in our hand as well.
Beer is legal. Marijuana is legal.
Marijuana is legal.
Beer, you don't walk around in Topsfield with it in your hand, maybe other places you do, but not in Topsfield. You don't walk around with marijuana in your hand in Topsfield.
Exactly.
That's, that's the analogy. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Um, should we move on to thickly settled speed reduction?
Sure. So, um, uh, just real briefly on this, this is something that, um, was generated through both Chief and I over the last year. Um, receiving a number of, of, um, correspondence from residents, uh, concerned with, with speed of traffic on a number of different roads. Um, as you all know, we created the Traffic Advisory Committee. Um, we've made some adjustments to, with signage in some locations, um, as well, uh, preemptively. And now we're, we've met a couple of times in the last couple of weeks in re- as a, as a formal group, the Traffic Advisory, to take on a couple of specific items. One of the things that, um, Chief and I talked about more recently was, um, now that we do have the Traffic Advisory, would it make sense before putting it us onto a warrant article to have the Traffic Advisory adju- address this? It takes some real time and consideration to see what all the, uh, impacts could potentially be rather than, um, moving it this time forward as a warrant article. And so I'll let Chief, maybe if you want to follow up with any of your thoughts on that. Um, but again, this was one we've talked about before. I don't know if anyone on the board, it, you know, if there's some immediate value and you want us to continue down this path with it, um, we can have that conversation. But, um, certainly want to kind of let you know that we've had some further thoughts on it and, and share that with you and get your feedback.
Chief? Oh, thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. So, uh, absolutely correct. We had a lengthy conversation yesterday. Uh, I'm not sure how, uh, warm this has been received. Uh, but again, with the implementation and the, uh, 100% support of all the select board members in the establishment of this Traffic Advisory Committee, um, I think this might be premature to move this forward for this, uh, annual town meeting. I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we've identified a lot of, um, information and errors, uh, within our current, uh, system in the sense that they, we have 118 streets in the town of Topsfield. We only have 24 streets that have posted speed limits and we have nine of those streets are not posted properly. So again, I think we really have to take a look at our signage, the proper posting. A lot of, uh, work needs to be done by the Traffic Advisory Committee to bring this forward to the select board. And, you know, again, uh, this is a, there's a lot of difference of opinions. There are 46 communities in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts that have do- adopted a townwide, uh, have adopted the 90, uh, chap- Massillon 90, chapter 90, section, uh, 17 on the reduction of a thickly settled area to be the speed of 25 miles an hour. Uh, so again, but with this establishment and everything- So again, but with this establishment and everything that we're moving forward and the grants that we're receiving and the technology that we're, of the, um, traffic enforcement items that we're going to be purchasing with speed indicators and radar, radar trailers and everything. I think we can do a really good job at enforcing the rules and regulations of the posted speeds and also greater than reasonable speeds. And then I think that we need more time to really dissect everything that's going on in the town of Topsfield regarding speeding, motor risk. And I'm in favor of removing this from a warrant article and to dig deeper into it and bring it forward next year.
I don't think we need to talk about it much more than that, but I'll say that I am as in favor of lowering speed limits as much as possible, but I wouldn't argue with you to delay. Let's make sure when we do it, we do it correctly.
I would agree. I, I had felt from the beginning that this was moving a little bit too quickly. And with the recent formation of a legitimate Traffic Advisory Committee, I'm glad to see that you'd rather give that group a chance to formulate an opinion and use them as giving you the authority to move forward with this.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other comments relative to that one?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kevin, the street light repurchase and retrofit.
Yeah, I think that, um, this also is one that I'm, I'm, after further contemplation, I don't know if it rises to the need of a, of a warrant article at this time. I think that will be, we need to do a little bit more research into it. And also it's an operational item at the end of the day as well. So certainly something we could take back and have conversations before we make any decisions with the community, with you folks, obviously, before we enter into any type of agreement to do something different than just a standard retrofit where we were to purchase. But for right now, it just, it, it, again, it felt like it probably doesn't rise to the, to the level for this coming year to add as an item without necessarily having the right data behind it and not knowing if it necessarily needs to actually be a warrant article at the end of the day.
Great.
That makes sense. Okay. The old highway garage.
Um, still super excited for that one. Um, so I've had some great conversations with, with the Chair of the Planning Board. We received a quote back on a survey that allow us to bring to the Planning Board in February for subdivision of the property. As you know, that property is with the fire station. We've had conversations with Chief Collins Brown, both the Planning Chair and myself, around what the impacts would look like as a buddy neighbor. It's also in historic district. So when I do meet, I mentioned last night, I'm meeting with the Historic District on downtown revitalization. One of the things I want to flag for them is this parcel as well, and that it is within the Historic District and their thoughts around that as well. But we're still moving full steam ahead on that. Right now, I've received yesterday from Martha, who did some research, chain of custody of the property, the deeds, work she's done, sending that to KP. They're going to verify just to make sure there isn't an additional need to move the, to have it accepted as a property by the, by the town through the Select Board. We think it already has that ownership rights to the town, but that would be another step as part of the process. But I think right now it is, we've talked a lot about it. So I don't know if anyone has any additional questions, but we're continuing to move down the path as if we're going to have this on the warrant this year.
Um, the issue about the voting to approve the disposition of the property. What's involved in that? Do we have to stipulate what the property could be used for? Do we have a say in that outside of the zoning of the area?
So we won't have a town meeting, a proposal, an RFP on the street. We could, but we won't. And it's okay that we won't. The RFP can come after the town election, uh, town vote to allow for it to be surplus to essence. And, um, well, the order of operations will be to, like I mentioned, was the, um, the survey, go to planning, survey, and then looking at the subdivision as well as the road extension of school app, going to the Planning Board. Hopefully with their approval, we'll continue to be able to move it forward. And then as part of this, those will be the three articles that are associated with, at the town meeting will be the, um, the third one will be a vote to allow the town to disposition to sell the property to, to someone, to hopefully redevelop and make it a purposeful property. But that is a step the town, as the, my understanding belief is that they need to vote for, to allow the town to put it out and, and to sell the property to somebody.
But as far as that we go forward and do, we'll say just the first one, where we do rezoning into the Business Village District of three parcels. The second thing would be to go ahead and then create the, the street in, in, within that, within one of those parcels, which is owned by the town at that point, so that we could do that. Hopefully maybe both of those things will get done through the Planning Board this year. The third thing, again, could be added, but that, but any, any one of those, in that order, can be done towards moving ahead on it. If we just do all of the zoning items, those two, the first two items, the vote as to how to deal with the property could be done in the following years. We gain more information and more inputs from the community, from developers, from whatever else. And as far as the disposition of the property, I mentioned that in my mind, we, we talked about this about a month ago. And Kevin, you asked what our thoughts are on the property. I indicated that I, and I do believe it's a jewel within the town. It's a very special piece of property right there in the center of the town. I'm not sure that the town is willing to sell that. I can believe that we might do a long-term lease. You have to give somebody who's going to do an investment in it, something to know he's going to have a number of years to have it. But much as the DCR provides for curative things where they do a long-term leases, it's an unusual thing to do a long-term lease to let somebody do a development in there. And yet let, let the town have some control over that jewel, which is the town's jewel. So I, I'm not sure that the, the third one, what the nature of that is. Even a long-term lease requires us to go to the town meeting to get approval. And again, lastly, as I said, we don't have to do all three. We could do one or two or all three.
If, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, that's absolutely right. I mean, there'll be multiple options on, on, on this that need three steps, in essence. If, if any of the three do not pass though, if the road is not accepted, that will not, basically at that point, the, we won't be, have the frontage for any type of development to take place. We don't have the rezoning that likely won't allow for a project that would be of, 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 of a use beyond, I think it's fit two homes in there under the existing zoning, I believe, or two residents, I should say. And then obviously with the disposition, if that's not passed, then we've changed the zoning, but nothing can happen on that other than town use, continuous town use at that point. So that's spot on, Mr. Yan, just kind of, to kind of emphasize that. And I think the, um, the, the lease versus purchase, I have a little, I've experienced my real estate background, but I also have experience in my municipal work in Beverly. We've, we just, we put the disposition, multiple properties. One was a lease, two or three of them were purchases. And the lease had a little bit more layers to it. Wasn't that it wasn't a possibility that, and we, it took multiple years, took six years to get somebody to respond and put a bid in and one bid. And we went forward with it. Whereas the purchases of two former schools that were, I would say gems in that community, Briscoe Middle School being one, which used to be the high school, front and center, right at the edge of the downtown. That was a very, I would say controversial, but a lot of community conversation around what was, what we wanted to see happen there. And that was a disposition as well. But written to the RFP, um, on that particular example was specific bonus points in the RFP for historical preservation and other elements that preserved sort of the element of that property so that it didn't lose, it wasn't leveled and then a very modern looking building coming from the ground up. And those are things I believe as we go through the community conversations around that property in the months to come, we'll get that feedback. And if that's something that is just paramount to people, that that is a gem and we want to protect the facade or whatever it might be, we can build that into an RFP. And people who are responding will have to get creative around that.
Kevin, are these three separate articles? Do you envision them being three separate?
KP's indicated they're almost, they want, they, they suggested that they want to put them into one warrant because if one of them fails, then none of them happens. So if you have the zoning changed, but the road doesn't, it doesn't do any good. That was KP's suggestion. And that I'll certainly follow their lead or if there's a desire for, to go in a different direction, obviously the board's lead on that. But kind of get, their feedback was one, one article, three different layers built into it.
But you envision being able to hold town meetings to explain this piece of property and what some options may be and what the potential could be for that area?
My, my hope is, so the butters will be notified when it goes to the Planning Board in November, in February. And so my, my hope is trying to find that capacity. I personally want to touch base with the abutting neighbors before anything publicly gets out. Have a conversation with them. Let them know that we're having these, these discussions and listen to them. Really understand what they would like to see as, as immediate butters. And then have a more broad, community-wide conversation around it. Cause it is a gem. It is the town's resource and is in the, on the edge of the downtown, hopefully in the downtown. And, you know, it does serve to be a benefit to all if something productive can go in there. So I think that's, those are the next steps between roughly now, talking with the abutting neighbors, having the Planning Board hearings, going to the, having a broader conversation, assuming it passes Planning Board, around what people would like to see in there. Town meeting, if that's approved, then go start crafting an RFP based on the feedback we receive from the community and the guidance of the Select Board, and then go out to market. And hopefully if things time up, because it's market driven too, as we all know, there's a lot of, you know, restaurant there would be fantastic, but restaurants aren't doing great right now. It might be strategic in when we actually put that RFP on the street, depending on how COVID goes, to be, to be realistic. So.
Well, it's, it's obvious to me that there's a lot of details that have got to be addressed here. I will just say that I agree with Dick and it's a pretty special piece of property. And we need to try to make sure that it's done correctly. I'm glad that it's, I'm glad that something is moving forward because it's been sitting there as a junk collector for 20 years. And, and it's too valuable to let it sit there, in my opinion. Whether we lease it or sell it, it's kind of immaterial to me at the moment. And we need to handle that correctly, but we need to do something with it to get some value for the town out of it somehow.
And I would just say that while I agree that we absolutely need to do something with it, I would also caution that to, I think everyone's point, that we do it correctly. Because I would want to make sure that whatever we do is done correctly. And if that means taking a little more time to make sure we maximize the positive effect for the town, meaning whatever we put there, I, I mean, I think it's like, it's, it's basically like an anchor store at a mall, right? And I know you used the word mall in Topsfield is not, that's, I'm not saying we're building a mall. But I'm saying that, you know, the big store at the end of the mall is what brings people into all the littler stores in the mall. And so the idea is that this will be something in town that will bring people into town. And, and that one, you know, that one tide will, will raise all the ships in town, I guess, is, is my hope. And that only works if we make sure whatever project goes in there is the right project.
And I think, Kevin, you had mentioned there's no timeframe after this goes to town meeting. So if it's approved to rezone and put the street in, we can take our time and make sure, to Marshall's point, that we find and determine what is the right property. So there's nothing that says we have to go out immediately in the next four to six months and, and put out an RFP. We can continue to evaluate what we think is best to go in there.
We could even have a second community meeting after town meeting. I think it's important to have that community-wide conversation before we go in May to town. But I think, you know, after we get through, the dust settles, we could have those further conversations get a little bit more specific at that point as well. But yes, there's, there, once we have the, the mechanical components of these articles that allow us to move forward, we can then at that point strategically move forward. Like, like I mentioned before, COVID might be something that makes us delay six months a year. I mean, we still don't know what might be right. But, um, before we go out to RFP as well, once we go off to RFP, we can't talk to anybody because if they respond, then it's a violation. But before that, we can promote the property and let people know that this is coming onto the market. And I think that's going to take a little bit of time as well, working those networks and talking to the people that might be interested in possible purchase of property.
And, and I agree, it is a jewel as far as a, a location. In its present condition and without the zoning and without the street, it's not really a jewel. It's an old, broken down building.
It is.
And the town has spoken multiple times that they want to see the town improve, the downtown. They want to get some restaurant or some, you know, gathering place put in that would create revenues, create a spot to meet. The, the town has been asking for this. So I, I am very excited about this moving forward. And I think we do have, after we get these things, as you said, the, the logistics nailed down with the zoning and, and the frontage, we can take our time to make sure this is done right. But I don't see any point in delaying. I think this, we should get this, this done sooner the better.
I see that Jen Brown is here with us and I'll ask her, how much junk do you have in there?
Take that back. If you've noticed from your, um, from your general fund, I sold a lot of equipment from surplus equipment. So I'm not a keeper, I'm a thrower. So I, we don't have a lot. We can, we're, we're very flexible.
Jen, Jen, I'm, I'm joking.
But one of the things I will say is Chief and I've had conversations where there are some things that are used regularly that are stored in the shed out back. And what are we, what are we going to do to accommodate that? We've actually freed up some capacity or the cemetery, for example, where we might be able to locate material there. Chief actually suggested that. She said most of that stuff is not needed right on their right hip. They can, you know, they need it, they'll know and they'll grab it if need be. So we have some options on that. We also talked about it with a disposition and a sale that comes in with some dollars. You know, we had to identify some of those dollars to help, you know, build something for her that, that might be needed on the property if, if. But those are the things, the biggest value, and this is just echoing with Mr. Hookstead, it is 100% the opportunity for that to be a, a, a spark that helps the downtown and the revitalization effort. If we got a restaurant in there, a brew pub, something that could activate that space in the downtown, a space that we control, that's special. Cause we, we're not a for-profit or a profit generator per se. You know, in a sale of a property, we'll receive funds. But, you know, I'm laser focused on the opportunity that might go in there and making sure it's something that will, they'll jive for the downtown. Bring, bring what I keep hearing from so many people that the down, that they want to see in the downtown. And, you know, that, that's the core objective is to, to be that anchor tenant, that, that, that spot that people can hopefully generate more interest down the road as well to bring new shops in, in places. We've got a great business community already. But as the saying goes, you know, all ship, I'm going to kill the saying. I mean, the ship, the high tide raises all ships.
Rising tide raises all boats.
I went for it and then I froze.
I'll admit, I was halfway through the phrase when I'm like, I'm not sure I'm saying this correctly. But I think I got it.
I went for it. I don't know. But anyways.
And the Planning Board, Kevin, is in favor of this as well?
They are, they are. There's, there's been conversations about it and they, um, they've, they've indicated a positive around everything on this. And I know, like I mentioned, the Chair's been doing some work with us to make sure that we're heading down the path correctly.
But we do have to recognize, and I said this the first time when we talked about it, that there are some uses of it. We, they should not limit our moving ahead with this, but we do have to recognize those uses and come up with solutions for those uses, whatever they may happen to be. If it's essentially telling the environmental police, get the heck out of here. Or it's telling the rail trail, you got to find another place or providing another place for the rail trail. And for the COA van, you know, we're going to leave it out in the cold, out in the cold. Excuse me, out in the snow and rain and whatever else versus in a garage. We, we do need to work that out, but that's, we can't forget it, but that's not a driving force for where we go.
We're also looking at, um, we've talked with Heidi and Concom about it with setbacks with the Brook there. We've talked with building. We've talked with the departments about, you know, a lot of those nuances. Like I mentioned, Chief, about her stories. We talked about, Mr. Yan, what you mentioned. There's a lot of moving parts, but we're laser focused and, and we're going to make sure none of those balls drop as we move forward through it.
Great. Um.
As far as the jewel goes, the jewel. As far as the jewel goes, the jewel is the, the property in that location within the town. That's what represents the jewel, not the old highway garage.
Not the, not the, not the building.
That's true, but until we do something with it, it's a gem in the rough for sure. Okay, uh, Kevin, light pole easements, number nine, is that on or off?
I'm going to actually recommend we take that off. I talked to KP about that. Um, to do it right, we need to do a survey. Um, there's a number of, uh, things that we'll need to do. Um, being realistic around capacity and timelines. And also the fact that I feel strongly that the poles should be in the ground before we ask somebody who just gave us a license agreement, those four, uh, property owners. Um, that we want an easement from you now too. I think the light should go in the ground, people get familiar with it and then we come back. We have all the rights we need right now. Um, with the license agreement to get them in the ground. If they're accepted, people like them, which I believe they will. We'll look at maybe next town meeting to ask for those easements and we'll start the process earlier around the, um, around the survey, et cetera.
Light poles, correct? That's all it is. Out of the 20, it's only four. And we do have the licenses already, you said, right?
Fine, by each of the property owners.
We have them.
Yes.
Yes, of course, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Kevin, you mentioned they were, um, in New York. Um, when are they anticipated to be in Topsfield?
I, I don't know, I don't know, um, Friday. That's, that's service right there. Yeah, no, um, we, we're, so we are Friday, so hopefully the following week, we need to line up the vendor. Uh, who will do the installation. We're not going to install it in-house, um, the same group that installed at the, um. The one in June, at end of June, they'll be coming back to install them for us, all covered within the shared street grant that we received. Um, through those funds and, um, we'll have those hopefully up and running in the next couple of weeks, it sounds like, which if all that goes to plan.
Where do we keep them until they're installed?
At the old, at the old highway garage.
So yeah, we actually sneak peek, if you look in the windows, the bases are there and the luminaires are already here. It's just the poles that we're waiting for.
Lynn, uh, Lynn, how big's your backyard?
Okay, um, great. All right. So that's an easy one then, Kevin. We'll take that number nine off.
Yep.
Um, moving on to number 10, Coppermine Road.
So I think we're all very well versed in this. Um, we've had a lot of experience in the fall and then. More recently, just by way of update, um, I know, uh, Mr. Hook and Mr. Gant were present, um, on the 13th for the meeting on site. Um, shared with the neighbors where we were regarding, um, the earmark. Which I was really hoping we'd get because it would have been the path of least resistance and the most immediate result for the neighbors. Um, unfortunately, that was not in the operating budget this year as all the earmarks were slashed except for COVID-related ones. And, um, so as a result, we promised we'd go back to them, so I, we went back, explained to them where we were, said. There's a few options on the table. One, if you wanted to ask the select board to put this on the warrant this year. Um, my takeaway from our previous meetings is that they would, you can certainly ask them and then they can, they would. Be aware and can make that decision as a body to put it on or not, asking for $45,000 out of a raise and assess. Um, to cover that, um, beyond the 300,000 we have in our capital building, uh, budget. Now it's one option. I also said, if these patches have held up and you're comfortable with them for say another, you know, eight to 10 months. We could look to put this in as an appropriation in the operating budget again. Uh, I'm sorry, in the state's operating budget as an earmark. Um, they ended up taking a vote in favor, um, pretty predominantly in favor of moving it forward. Um, or requesting to move it forward to the select board as a warrant article. Um, and so. Uh, again, I, eyes wide open on this. There, there's obviously a heavier risk for them having to seek a number of approvals. Select board to put it on the warrant, FinCom to hopefully support it. And then either way, whether FinCom supports it or not. The community voting it positively or not. And if they don't, there are some real considerations. What does that mean for Brad? And Joan, Brad Hill and Jo- and Joan Lovely, do they feel comfortable putting it on as an earmark again, as, as the town as a whole have spoken on it? And that's a town's earmark in essence. Um, and that might complicate that as a backup, um, to them. And so that was expressed, but again, they, they wanted to start moving down this path. Um, one thing I have done is I spoke with, um, the chair of the FinCom, um, Jay. And I, I, yep, Jay, and, um, I, 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 I gave an update sort of where things were because the FinCom was brought up a number of times in the conversation. And I thought it only fair to keep them informed. And there seemed to be a willingness to have possibly a, a conversation. Uh, before it's formally submitted to them to review, to get a straw poll, maybe call it. Or just some conversation about what they know on the issue and anticipation that it could be coming. Um, which at that point, you know, if it does, if the select board moves it on as a warrant article. And then, and then the FinCom's weighed in and, you know, if it seems like there's going to not be support for it. There could be another decision point, um, that we could go back to the neighbors and say, listen, we could still move forward, but it doesn't appear. It's going to be supported, but it's not official. You could take it, we could take it the next step and ask them to, to, to take a vote up or down on it. Um, but for right now, in today's purposes, I know we're only looking at. Whether or not the select board wants to take it and bring it to the next phase, which is consideration for the FinCom. Um, and so this is on here at $45,000. This represents paving of the road from the Locust Street. To, uh, Topsfield Middleton line of Coppermine Road. So the section of Coppermine that is, um. In question for all these months, um, in years. And so that's basically the summary of where we are with Coppermine Road and, um. We can certainly write up an article with, if you folks want to put it on the warrant this year or bring it at least to the FinCom, um, or, or. Get close to getting to the FinCom, however we want to do it. My ultimate goal, and I've said this to the neighbors, I've said it to all of you as well. I really want to find a way to get that road paved and I, I really don't want to have any, um, sorry, I'm going to terrible puns. Speed bumps along the way, um, if we can avoid them. Um, only because. You know, it's, uh, it's, it's not going to be a slam dunk because we all know at any, any step of this process that we've undertaken so far in going forward.
Kevin, from a legal perspective, are all those hurdles cleared that we know who has title to it? There are no issues with that if we were to go ahead and, and pave? Do we know who has title to it?
Uh, we, it's in a blind trust for the heirs of, um, Flatley. Um, and. The reality is, is because of our easement, KP Law has, has opinioned that we can. pave the road as, and perform other types of maintenance on it, um, as a result of having such easement. Easement doesn't require us to. There's no, nothing that requires the town of Topsfield to really do anything on that road. And the liability is very, it's. Treat, the insurance company treats our liability on that road the same as any other road in Topsfield. Um, so that I think the greatest exposure is $5,000 to the town if somebody, um, ended up suing us as a deductible for it. Um, and that's cata- like catastrophic i- i- instance. So, you know, it, it really comes down to them being residents in our town and trying to do the right thing for them. Um, and doing our best to try to get them there in the way that can be successful at the end of the day.
I have always been under the impression, maybe, and I'm beginning to get the idea that it's a mistaken impression. About the fact that this was going to be a citizens petition. Is that not the case?
Um, so one of the question, when it was, when we talked about it at the, the neighborhood meeting. We did talk about the option of a citizens petition, uh, versus a article that's put on by the select board. Um, I don't want to speak for the two select people who are at the meeting, um, but just in general terms, it, it, it. It felt like if they were going to go through the trouble of getting 10 signatures, um, we might as well just. Do it to save the, the angst of having to rewrite their language and, and all the things that go along with it. And, you know, there were certain types of, um. The conversations from, I think, the fall, there was an expectation from the neighbors that this would be something that, um, potentially the board could put on. Potentially. I don't think anyone said definitively, um, but they said potentially.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, I, in a public meeting that we all had, and then again on the street, I pledged that I would support this. But I also made clear to them that it's basically on them to, you know, get people to vote for it. Uh, I will support it putting on there. I think we should do it as a select board thing. I don't think there's any reason to, to bother with the citizens petition. I mean, they had twice as many people standing on the street right there than they would need signatures, so it would be on there. So why bother with that part of it? Uh, I would support our putting it on and I would support, you know, I'll stand up at the meeting and, and encourage people to vote for it. But I also make clear to them that the, one of the drawbacks is, is it's not a successful vote history. Granted, my very, my history is exceedingly limited, but history tells me that once something is voted down at town meeting, it's hard to get a positive vote in the future. So I don't, I don't see any need to, to bother with the citizens petition part of it.
I, I would agree that we should put it on. Um, my, my understanding is if a citizens petition is put together. That we cannot adjust the language of it, is that correct? Can we adjust the language?
Can't touch it.
We can't touch it. So my fear would be that they wouldn't be wording it in a way that was then enforceable, that there might be some problem with it. And so I would want to make sure that if it, it got a positive vote, that it could move forward, that there was nothing wrong in the wording. They didn't leave anything out. Um, so I would want to make sure after all their effort to push it forward and the review by FinCom. That whatever is voted on is legally correct and we can ensure that if we do the, the warrant article ourselves.
And that's very much in the spirit of what we said last year, that if they did not push a special town meeting in September. That we would support it at the ATM. And I think supporting it at the ATM means we've put it on the warrant. So I, I think that was the expectation. I think that's in the spirit of it that we would put it on.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward then. Okay, um, moving on, the economic development planner, number 11, Kevin?
Yeah, so I, I, I know we talked about this last year as a standalone warrant article and. Um, as I've contemplated this a little bit and as I've gotten more comfortable and familiar in my role here as the town administrator. My thought on this would be, um. It, it lives in Article Three, it's operational, it's, 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 it's a position within the town, um. That, that would benefit the town, obviously. I think if it's passed, um, if the timing's right and supported, I think that the. The, the, to have it as a standalone sets sort of a precedent that's outside or maybe inconsistent to some of the positions we've done, we've had in the past. Um, to identify it as a standalone, um, warrant article. And I also think that doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the opportunity for us. To still have a, a discussion about that position, um, during town meeting. And we could, at, um, when Article Three comes up, um, we, uh, at town meeting, we could have. Um, we could have the discussion at that point and hold that and then have the discussion on what, what that one particular item might mean within the operating budget. Still allows us to have the same type of conversation around whether or not we want to do it or not. Um, and, and rather than having, I guess, at the same time, rather than not having multiple way avenues. Because we still haven't gone through the full select board processes with the operating budget and seeing if there's things up or down there. We haven't gone through, um, the FinCom's review of that. They might, FinCom might, we added in the operating budget as an overask this year. Um, 31,000, I think is the dollar amount that we, we landed on as an estimate of what the cost would be. It's obviously varies based on, uh, experience and where they would fall in the current grid. Um, but it might not even get past the select board, it might not get past FinCom. But if it did, there's still that chance to have that conversation. I feel like that's more consistent in my understanding of these, uh. Of how we might treat something like this, an added position, than to create a standalone, uh, warrant article, um, that would look at it. Uh, as well. And because it also is a perpetual cost, it's not just a one-time cost, right? If we, if we bring the person on, we don't want to come back to town meeting every year asking for the salary of the person. That's not fair to that person if it is passed. Um, and it's just not a good way to do business. So the thought was, keep it in Article Three, see if it gets through the next two phases between the select board and the FinCom. And then if, for the purposes of conversation, community-wide, um, I'll certainly talk about it at my open house Thursday, talk about it, any other opportunity we can publicly. And then the town meeting can certainly be something that we talk about during, uh, town meeting as well.
Kevin, is this in the operating budget right now?
As an overasking, so you won't actually see the bus, the, the, the spreadsheet of the.